On the agenda, starting with the Sheriff's Office. So we'll go ahead and we'll begin our July 8th briefings. Welcome, everyone. Thanks so much for being here. We'll begin first with the Sheriff's Office. And I understand David Crivs will be presenting on the five issues, mostly grants, it looks like, and a couple of other items. Good morning, David.
Good morning. And I'm David Crivs, I'm the Finance Director for the Sheriff's Office. And we do have five grants and congressionally-directed spending requests to brief you on this morning. The first item is two small grant, or no, I'm sorry, a small grant from the Statewide Internet Portal Authority, or SIPA, that for $2,116 that would allow us to purchase iPads for our records needed. These tablets are used to allow citizens to be formed electronically and remain in compliance with concealed handgun permit applications and open records requests. Grant is for $2,116. There is no match required. And so we're just here today to ask for your support in the application that we've already submitted. And then if we are awarded this, you can report a supplemental to our budget in that amount of the grant.
Wait, Commissioner, do you have any questions about this first grant?
No questions.
Thumbs up.
Okay. Commissioner, so, all three in support.
Thank you. Second item, it's a Colorado Incident Management Team grant application. This is two small grants that together total $20,500. The Juxton County Incident Management Team is a multi-agency team that responds to large all-hazard situations in Juxton County, surrounding areas created in 1992. It's comprised of over 100 people from 20 different agencies from around the county. This grant would, these two grants would provide funding for some required training for incident management team members and supplies to enhance response, communication, control, and command. There is no grant match required. And this grant is from the state of Colorado's Homeland Security and Emergency Management. So we're asking for your support for the, our application for this. And if awarded, support a future supplemental to allow us to accept and receive those funds.
Great, thank you. Any questions on this one?
No questions, but I do have a comment. Recently, the Board of County Commissioners issued a letter to the federal government, to our congressional delegation about some proposed changes to FEMA and some of the new changes around critical incidents and response. And so I just wanted to call that letter to your attention and to the attention of the public, to make the public aware that we have significant concerns about some of the changes that are being proposed and some of the funding cuts that are also being proposed along with that. So I'm very supportive of us applying for these grants because I think that they are very, very valuable to our county. And I would hope that these kinds of opportunities continue into the future.
You know, and I would say, on a related note, as we watch the headlines, the very devastating headlines coming out of Texas, one of the emerging stories is about the communication system. Hello, Sheriff Regginali. Regginali, do you like that? Your wife, Kyle.
I'm gonna use that now.
That's a good one, isn't it? It's like your own, like, yeah. Someone really does need to check this coffee. There's a lot of that.
Okay, I just want to go over it.
Concerned. And maybe this is a future agenda topic, but one of the, one of the areas that I think might be helpful is if the board is open to this, is working with the Sheriff's Office and our emergency services team and others to take a look at, just a reminder of how we communicate to our community about emergencies that happen, whether it's wildfire, flooding, or other kinds of issues. Are there any gaps that we should be aware of? And I know this is all information that you look at on a daily basis. So not a concern, but it may be helpful for us too, as we get questions from our community, talking with different community groups during town halls. So that might, if the board is interested, perhaps that's something we could look at in the future. And that might be, I don't know when our next work session is. If it's not too far away, that could be a good work-study session. And if it is too far away, then maybe we think about doing a briefing, just a half hour. Oh, Board members, would you be open to doing just maybe a half hour, 40-minute session? Perhaps we could do that in the future, just to hear from you how we currently communicate. Is there anything additional that we need to add?
Well, and it's, it's ever-changing.
Absolutely.
So what we know today could be completely different tomorrow.
Agreed. Agreed. Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Well, is there, is there anything else we should know about this particular grant? And Board members, are you all in favor of moving forward with this one? Okay. Thumbs up.
Excellent. The third one is Colorado Department of Local Affairs Peace Officer Behavioral Health Support Grant. We've actually received funding from DOLA for this on one or two occasions already. This allows us to provide neurofeedback therapy for, so far primarily for our deputies who have, helps with impacts for those who've been exposed to law enforcement-related traumas. And so this would allow us to continue that program. We have 73 folks participating in right now. We have 89 people on our waitlist. We'd also like to, as funding, as we can cobble together more and more funding, to be able to expand this to immediate family members who are also impacted by some of the trauma that can come through just the natural course of being a deputy and being exposed to some of the issues in law enforcement. So this is a grant for $300,000. There is no match required. We also will have this in our budget request as well. We're, like I said, we're pursuing multiple funding angles on this to try to continue this program that has proven to be very successful and well-received by, by those who have participated in it so far. So we would like you to, your support in applying for this grant, and then if awarded, support in including the amount in a future budget supplement.
Hey, can I just have one real quick follow-up question about that? So if the, if the grant is renewed, it would cover those who are currently involved in the program? And then it would help address a portion of the 89 people, or all of those 89 people who are on the waitlist? Probably a portion, I would guess, but do we know?
The 300,000 will probably cover about half of those.
Half of the folks on the waitlist.
Okay.
Hence the need for continued funding to address that. And it's also good to hear that people are taking advantage of this program. Any other questions or comments? Support. All three in support.
Next item is, actually three items. It's the request we put forward for the congressionally-directed spending that were submitted to Senator Bennett, Senator Heckle, Lou Ferrigno, and Representative Peterson, Pedersen. These three items included an increase, is the biometric harm reduction that you've seen in the past, some grants we've applied for and weren't successful on, although it sounds like we might, may be getting some funding through GROCK, which I think is the next grant application that we're asking your support on. We also have that in our budget request as well. This is, I think, an important item. It's basically provides bracelets to monitor individuals, kind of vital, so that we can find out quicker if somebody is having withdrawals from coming off. We're seeing a definitely continuing trend of folks coming in with more and more severe substance abuse issues when they get into jail, and they may, from what I've heard of folks over the jail talking, you can be talking to someone one minute, they seem perfectly fine, and 20 minutes later, they're crashing and they're with very little indication of that coming in. So this would allow us to be more responsive upfront and particularly identifying those folks who appear to be at greater risk. The second project that we requested was for Communications Unit to help with communications in some of our remote areas. It would allow us to provide a more state-of-the-art Forward Command post when dealing with emergencies. And then the final item that we put forward for the, for the congressionally-directed funding to be considered would be purchasing new radios that offer radio capacity and capability for all our scale incidents. So kind of tying in, both those items tying in with better communication during critical incidents. No match would be required for this. So again, we submitted these requests to the delegation a while ago, and we're just kind of tying up the bow here to seek your support for our submitting those items to be considered, and if awarded, that you would support a supplemental to allow us to accept and receive those funds.
Great. And I'll just mention, thank you so much, David, that GROCK did award $569,000 and some change for real-time biometric monitoring. However, I don't think that covered the full cost. And Commander Prang was there as well. Because there's a potential conflict of interest, none of the Jeffco folks were able to weigh in during that conversation. But the door was left open to see how it goes in the first year with potentially additional funding for the second year, and really appreciate the work and support the idea of finding more dollars for this program. Can you, commissioners, any questions?
Um, just, real quick, I just, knowing that these congressionally-directed grants and applications are, even if they're giving out multiple grants, they're not going, probably not going to give Jefferson County as a whole, multiple grants. Are we communicating within, as you apply for these, that you're also communicating with our folks here, not in the Sheriff's Office, when we're, or other departments are applying for these other grants as well? Not that, not that we can't, I just want to make sure that we're applying for the ones we most need to, I guess.
We can double-check that our grant writers are all communicating. I believe they are. But I will double-check to make sure that they are.
Yeah, and I would, just as, as I think these types of grants might be coming fewer and farther between, just to make sure, I do think we need, we need to be casting a wide net and doing these applications. I just want to make sure that we're.
There's, there's a new caveat that we're finding in our application processes, that we are in the early stages of trying to figure out. In the application process and then also in the acceptance process, there is a clause that is being put in our federal grants that states that we will allow ICE into our detention facility at any given time to speak to whomever they wish to do so. And some of the statements that are being put in our grants, we're literally reading all of the fine print because some of the things they are asking me to sign is a direct violation of law. And so we are not signing those, which means just this week, we have given up two grants, federal grants. One was an application process that we did not go for, that we had gone for in the past. The other one is a COPS grant. And the verbiage seems to be changing in every one of them. So we are, are spending a lot of time reading those. And because of the violation to law that we are being asked to do by the federal government, we are not signing those grants or applying for those grants because of that. And I, we are working through that to see if there's something that the state will be able to do to support that, moving forward with, with some of the things that the state has already done, with executive orders coming through. But this has just come across my desk as of this last week, Friday.
I know the Attorney General has been looking at those closely with his team as well.
Yes.
I think he's passed 20 lawsuits at this point, or in part the reasons you're looking at more.
So it's, we're watching it. We're not losing our federal funding, but we're losing our federal funding.
Our ability to apply for certain grants that are.
Okay. And we also have a budget request in for this, and I think this is even on our 1A possibility list. So, I mean, we just had another incident this weekend. So it's, I think the timeliness of this is very, very kind.
Well, thank you for your screen. Right. That's it, I think.
Okay. Then the last one we have is.
All, everyone in support.
And then the last one we have is basically that GROCK grant that we've already applied for, and so we've just talked quite a bit about that. It's the $569,000 grant application, so just seeking for official support and then supporting the supplemental if the funds are awarded.
Support. All three in support. Thanks so much, Sheriff Rennelli, for being here. Prince.
Regginali.
Depris. Okay. We'll go next to, yeah. That's my future after my. Okay. Development and Transportation is next up. We've got about 10 minutes for this item, and we've got Adele and Eric with us. Good to see you both.
Good morning, commissioners. Our first item is an airport utility easement request corporation in Century Lane. Eric Doll is going to walk us through the specifics.
Sure, that's almost the specifics. It's a, it's a very simple utility, it's a very simple utility easement for a hangar so that they can get fiber optic communication lines to that hangar. They require an easement, and part of this accounting process is all easements have to be presented to the board. So we request staff recommends approval at a future hearing.
All right. Any questions? Support? Okay, two support.
Perfect, thank you. The second item we have is an exciting one, which has to do with the North Metro Fire Rescue property that we're selling. And so this is the Second Amendment to that purchase-sale agreement for lot six of the Verve Innovation Park. And today, in fact, is closing. And so there's a couple actions which Eric will explain as we move forward.
Certainly. So there are a couple actions that Adele said that we need to do today. One is the recognition that there will be a change in the legal description for this lot from the original legal description to a new one. That will be done also with closing today. We'll be ratifying the chair's signature. Those are the two things that we'll be doing as part of this hearing we have in the future. So staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the Second Amendment for the sale of this property to North Metro Fire District and have the chair's signature ratified at a future hearing.
Great to see this one moving forward. Any questions and use for? No questions, yes. Okay, all three in support. Thank you both very much. And next, we'll move to our county attorney and talk more about the Board of Equalization and a couple of issues under that topic. And we've got about 15 minutes for this one.
Great. And Commissioners Doll, Kipper, and Kerr, we'll recall this year, every year, every year, but this is new for you, Commissioners and Sinker. In your role as the Board of Equalization, there are various powers that you have. So we've got three different items on here because it deals with three different aspects, one of which, so 1.3.1 deals with the designation of arbitrators or the arbitration of property value appeals. So one avenue, if someone is unhappy with the Board of Equalization's decision, it can be sent to arbitration. And so the board appoints independent arbitrators to hear those appeals and issue binding decisions. We have a number of people who we have used year over year over year. There's no one new on this list, and we're just asking that we be allowed to put on a future hearing agenda, the appointment of these individuals listed in 1.3.1 for, to be arbitrators for the arbitration process. Any questions? Three thumbs up?
All right.
Okay. The second one is similar. It deals with referees who conduct hearings on two types of exemptions, seniors and disabled veterans. Under Colorado law, have the ability to apply for a property tax exemption. And so when people apply for that, sometimes it's rejected because either they haven't demonstrated what they need to, or they don't meet a certain element. They're allowed to appeal that. And so we have referees appointed by the commissioners who conduct those and determine whether or not they are in fact eligible for those exemptions. And then we would present the final recommendations at some point in a future hearing. So if we could have consent to appoint these individuals to be referees, then that would be great. Three thumbs up.
Any questions on this one? Support?
Actually, I do have a small question. What's the difference between a referee and an arbitrator? And why are they using one versus the other?
Because there are different processes. So under statute, the way it works is property valuations, this is another step post the Board of Equalization, that you have three options. You can file an appeal in district court, you can go to binding arbitration, or you can go to the Board of Assessment Appeals at the state level. And so that's an actual psychocorp process, but it's binding arbitration. So that's why you need an arbitrator for that. The people who conduct these, you will see, some of them are, I believe, the same because they have qualifications for both. For example, with the, let me get down to the next one. The abatement, one of them has specific statutory. Yep. So the arbitrators, because they're acting more like a court would in that process, there are statutory qualifications for them. And so that's in 1.3.1. The referees, they're just conducting a separate hearing. It's a different process. It's, I guess, below. It's not the same structure, I guess is the best way to describe it. But they have similar qualifications. They have to just be able to look at, you know, what is required by statute and apply that. And then the final one, the abatement hearings, those are also referees. And that's just how it's set up statutorily under Colorado law. And so. So then, three thumbs up for 1.3.2 before we go on to 1.3.3. So then the final one is the abatement hearings. So when you have a property valuation that has been assigned by the assessor, you can either appeal it to the Board of Equalization, or you can pay it and then challenge it in an abatement hearing. You cannot do both. And so the people who will be filing for abatement elected to not go through the Board of Equalization process. And so we have recommendations for two people to conduct those hearings on abatements.
So let me just go back to, I saw Andy give a thumbs up. I gave a thumbs up, and I know Rachel had a question. Are you good with the second one? Okay. And then on the third one, are there any questions or are we all in support? Okay.
We'll bring this to future hearing for those specific appointments.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Next up, we've got Strategy, Innovation, and Finance, and Dan Conway is here to present the assignment of 2025 private activity bond allocation.
Good morning, commissioners. I'd also like to mention, and then we've got several members from the review committee that evaluated the applications, and we do have some applicants on the call. So if you do have questions of them, we can promote them to panelists. But we're here today to offer a recommendation to the board. Before I do, I just wanted to highlight that we did revise the process this year. We made it a little bit more formalized, more structured. We created a website for people to log in and turn in an application with structured form, provided the timeline. That obviously helps with people planning so they can seek other avenues for private activity bond allocations. And then created that review committee as well. I think in the past, they kind of piecemeal three various parts of staff throughout the county. So I think it's made quite a bit of strides this year, but we're continuing to refine them as we go. But we received four applications this year. We are recommending two to be allocated, I suppose. It's not really awards, but the first, and I'll read all four. First is the Archway Investment Corporation. That's via the Housing, Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. And that is for their project called the Creekside Flats on 10th Avenue, and it will provide 150 transit-oriented affordable housing needs. They request 10 million, and the committee is recommending 10 million. Our total allotment this year is 13.2. Sorry, I passed over that. The second is from Jefferson County Housing Authority, doing business as Foothills Regional Housing.
I'm sorry, Dan. Quick question.
On, on the previous one, I did notice that the address was Denver.
Yes.
And you said that it was bordering Lakewood.
Yes.
Why did they go through Jeffco instead of Denver?
So we could definitely turn it over to committee. I think I'll look at, I think they were looking at both. Look at my notes on that. Let's see, this is the Archway.
And I understand.
Yes, they, yeah, they're also seeking funding with Denver, so they are looking for both.
Okay. But is that common for an entity to seek a PAB through Jefferson County for a property that's not located in Jefferson County?
That's a question I can't answer. This is my first year through this process. I don't have that history. I can tell you, looking back over historically through our county, we've pretty much gone with one group. Not many people have applied. I think that's largely because the interest rates have been low enough that it wasn't as appetizing as the, as the people. But from when we're looking through it, I don't think there's any restriction about jurisdiction. One of the things we do, first, what we are planning to follow with the board in a future session is if the board would like to establish criteria around that, so limit it to only Jefferson County or something in the region. But as we know now, as far as the committee is concerned, I don't think we have.
To be honest, attendees of that, there isn't limitation.
There should be.
And, and looking up the address, this, this is west of Sheridan, so I think it is in Lakewood.
Okay. Says bordering Lakewood.
Yeah.
Denver address.
I just looked up the address, and it's, comes up Sheridan Station Apartments. It's right by that Sheridan Park and Ride, by the light rail sta, you know, the parking structure, but just, and it is west of that. So.
Okay.
I believe that's.
I'm sure I would like to just underscore what Dan said. I don't believe that there's any prohibition on organizations in terms of where they're asking for the PABs. I mean, typically, the go-to is to ask within your own jurisdiction. But every jurisdiction only has a certain amount of private activity bonds that are allocated for their award or distribution. So, you know, I don't believe that there's any prohibition at all in terms of how Archway is going about it. I would also echo or share, because I'm not sure Dan touched on this, that the, these organizations also have the ability to go directly to the state and apply that direction as well. And normally, by a certain date within the year, we have to decide if we're going to award our private activity bonds or if we're going to allow them to revert back to the state balance, if you will. And so there, there's not only our opportunity for these organizations, but they can also go directly to the state as well if they don't receive allocations from us, or they don't receive enough of the allocation.
In fact, we established a timetable to specifically allow for any applicant who may not receive our allotment to seek those allowances with the state cap. So in terms of how we can, I'll just use the word award, but use the, award these allocations as we can issue those laws directly, we can transfer those allotments to another jurisdiction, another issuing jurisdiction. So that kind of speaks to that jurisdictional. So if our county didn't see they have a driving need for it, we theoretically could transfer those allocations to Denver, and then somebody could apply for them collectively. And I think that's probably why there's no jurisdictional limitation, if I were to interpret that, just in terms of a practice. And then, again, as Joe mentioned, anything that's not allocated automatically reverts to the state by September 15th, and then that would go into their process to do that. Often, I think we'll apply for both local jurisdictions and the state as well to find as opportunities.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. I, I mean, I was just curious.
Yeah.
We turned down two that were very clearly not bordering even, you know, that were just like way outside of Jefferson County. And given our new focus on affordable housing, I wanted to make sure that we weren't foregoing any opportunities for like foothills, which, you know, is your second applicant and, and other entities to be able to do transit-oriented development and affordable housing by, you know, granting or transferring those rights to other communities when, you know, it's a pretty big goal of ours, you know, ourselves. But it doesn't sound as if it was interfering with, you know, our ability to pursue any projects or, you know, open up the pathway for projects, I should say, because it's not us. But, and, and I do understand that it's a mechanism, you know, where they just, they have a formula for how they apportion it, and it makes sense that if we're not going to use it, or. And it makes sense that if we're not going to use it or, you know, make quote unquote awards, that we should transfer it so that other people can tap it. Because I think it's a really, really, really good mechanism. But I also am curious though if there is any connection or relevancy with regard to Solterra or Solteria. I can't even. Solteria.
Solteria.
Yeah. And I just was curious because I don't know what the bounds are. I don't know, you know, if there were any restrictions, but I can see, I would hate to give up or transfer that if, if we thought that it was something that could be utilized by the Jefferson Center for, for those purposes. So it doesn't change how I feel about the awards that were given or the two, you know, that were not recommended here. But would this, would this use up basically all of our allotment?
For 2025, yes. Where the recommendations to issue $10 million for Archway and then the remaining 3.2 for Jefferson County Housing Authority. In terms of that, that Jefferson Center, we did kind of discuss that to see if that would be something that would potentially work or help with their project. But I think the overriding concern is it wasn't timely enough. I think they needed to secure their other funding mechanisms quicker to launch that project. So I think that was part of the conversation.
Okay. Because this is the 2025 allocation, right? And so we wouldn't get another allocation until 26.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
I was, a little, little update as I'm looking at the maps here. So this, it's about one square block that includes the, the park and ride and then a couple of other housing facilities around this address. This is actually Denver. It's, it's like one block that Denver has west of Sheridan. Sheridan is generally the dividing line between Jeffco and Denver, Lakewood and Denver at this point. But this is a little carve out that Denver has west of Sheridan. So technically it is Denver, but it is surrounded on three sides by Lakewood.
Right. So.
And, and I do see that it's for transit oriented development and 150 units. And I'm wondering who's going to get credit for that?
Yeah. That is a, well, we are because it's surrounded on three sides by Denver.
Yeah, I don't actually think we do, but maybe we should.
Well, if, if the board was forward with it, potentially you'd be awarding this allocation. So.
And is there currently a connection or a tie between private activity bonds and the allocation formula for credit for those TOD units or not?
That's a great question.
That's a good question.
That I don't know.
It's a really good question. Is that clear?
Pursue that with Val.
I mean, I'm not, again, I'm not opposed. CHAFA is an extraordinary organization and I have a lot of confidence in the projects that they put forward. And it is going to further affordable housing in our region, which is really important. That's part of our blueprint and that's part of our strategy is to think regionally. So I have no objections to it. But it would be really great that if we are issuing the credits, that we get credit for making that allocation out of our allotment for affordable housing. The question mentions that they're working with City of Lakewood on the credits. Or 1, 2, 3. Sound like what? Okay. Well, at least just Lakewood.
But, but we could also, can't we also partner with Lakewood and, and dip it up, especially given our work on the bonds?
If they're able to do that with Lakewood, they can do that with us.
Right.
So I will bring this to Avel and Chris O'Keefe's attention as well as Cat Douglas and see if there's, if we, if this is a topic that's been discussed or if there's guidance from the state or can we just negotiate?
Because it's going to be very difficult meeting the, the metrics around those TOD density requirements. So it'd be very helpful if we could get credit for legitimate TOD coming out of our allotment that is affecting the region in the area. So that it kind of helps relieve that pressure elsewhere where we know it does not make sense.
Dan, where was Chris O'Keefe for Avel on this particular selection committee?
No. Originally Avel was, but too much of a scattering conflict. Which is, yeah. But he will be in the future.
So again, it doesn't impact my support of it. I would just like to follow up with that and maybe we can make this happen.
Sounds good.
So I'll follow up and I'll shoot the board.
Great.
And we'll, we'll have an idea.
That sounds great. Any other questions on this one before we? Okay. All in support?
So I just want to make sure that what the request is formally, we're requesting that on the, we include the board of current supports, including on the future agenda item, assigning $10 million of private activity bonds to the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority on behalf of Archway Investment Corporation and 3.2 million to the Jefferson County Housing Authority doing business as Foothills Regional Housing for 200 affordable housing units and to notify, direct staff to notify those applicants. And then providing necessary documentations to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs and authorize the chairman to execute assignment agreements with those entities following approval to form by the county attorney.
But do you want to figure out this issue before you bring it to hearing? Because if you're going to require some affordable housing, then you might want to put that in.
Yeah, I feel like there was support for moving forward and that we've got this on the table. Joe's going to reach out and then circle back, let us know if we can share in that and then continue to move it forward. So if we need to add that to a hearing, we can do that, whatever that may look like, or leave that time in between.
Yeah. Because if, if it comes to pass that we cannot take credit for it, it would not change my opinion. It's not contingent on one or the other, but it would be great if in the future
Yes.
we could learn to spot those. I mean, it's a new state law. So, you know, we haven't yet had this come before us in this way before. And we've never had to consider it before. So I would just like to explore that. Or is this another gaping hole in that legislation that was not considered?
Yeah, we'll definitely follow through on that. And give some information back to you and look at our new process.
Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Dan. Anything else you need from us?
That's all we got.
Free and support of moving forward. And then we're going to wait to hear from Joe.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. Appreciate the pleasure.
Thank you for those folks going on and listening in. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you all very much. Okay. Next up, we have Commissioner Reports and I will go to Commissioner Zenzinger. Is there anything you'd like to report out this morning?
Can I pass and you come back to me?
Sure.
Because I did think I had something to say.
Yes, no problem. We've got a couple of things. We're going to go to Commissioner Kurtz.
I do want to mention with Dr. Cog last week, it was brought up again on this new funding allocation for Dr. Cog's counties and cities, how much we would pay to be a part of Dr. Cog. After this, I, I think, and actually Commissioner Zenzinger, I think, presented to us because she, she had filled in for me on, on one of the, one of the meetings. And it's a pretty complicated formula that they're looking at. And it's, it's not directly, it's not upfront and obvious as to would we be paying more or less under this? And so the, the latest idea was, never mind, let's just. So just if, if our, our staff could just take a, a look at that in the.
Actually, I think they already did.
So, yeah. So I can, I can provide an update. You, it sounds like you have the latest and greatest update. But I do have an interim update.
Well, and it wasn't, there were no specific decisions made or anything. It's basically, we'll come to a vote at Dr. Cog and it might even be the one that.
It's going to be me, yes.
I, I think so. I'm not sure.
You could have guidance.
But it's, yeah, that's, that's why I wanted to bring it up. But it sounded like they didn't officially say that that's the direction they're going, but they were kind of moving in it, in that direction and they kind of wanted feedback from us. So.
The direction to stay the same.
Yes.
Right. Which, which base are we on? Okay.
I did, after Commissioner Zenzinger brought this up, I did meet with Dr. Cog's staff and had an extensive presentation from them. As part of that presentation, I think they were looking at four different options.
Yeah.
And then as part of their presentation to me, they said, Joe, by the way, we don't think any of these four options are going to be moving forward. We're now, we're now looking at option 4A, 4B and 4C. And so, you know, stay tuned as things develop. And one of those options was that things were going to remain the same for this upcoming year. And so I do have the presentation that I can forward to you. And you can talk for an hour about the different formulas. And as they walked me through it, I did give them feedback. I didn't weigh in on a particular option, but I asked questions and provided them real time feedback. And so I was waiting to hear what they were going to present and if it was business as usual. And so that's what the direction they were leaning. And I spoke to them. But I'm happy to provide the more extensive presentation that was given to the doctor on board several months ago. And if you'd like to see it.
Andy, is it your, if I am going to be at the, the meeting, so do you have any particular direction? What, what do you think I should lean in on?
I think that though, I think that's what the, the motion will be is, is just to keep it the same.
Okay.
And I think we should.
And you're fine with it?
Yeah. I don't think any of the options that were kind of bubbling a little higher. Again, I don't think they were significantly higher or lower. But they, it did get pretty complicated. And I think it was, is mostly for the, the really small municipalities were the ones that could be more impacted and you know, for one of the larger ones.
Yeah.
And yes, we pay more, but then we end up having still one vote for all of Jeffco. And some of these small towns of under a thousand people have one vote as well, which I don't necessarily, you know, that works in the US Senate, I guess, but not necessarily my, my preferred way of, of doing things. But with all of that, I, I think that will be the direction. And just, so I just wanted to bring that up. I don't think we will, you will be asked to vote on one of these complicated options that we might not, there might not be clear. The other, the other thing is with the Transit, Red Rocks Transit that I've been working on with our, our staff and with Councilman Watson, we are going to try to, Kate, what's the date of that? It's, it's a weekend in September. It's actually a Saturday in September. I think it's the 20th. Yes. We are looking to move forward on a one day demonstration project, not even a pilot or anything, but a demonstration project of running some, some shuttles Saturday, September 20th during the day. And we'll try to get some media coverage, which the media loves to talk about Red Rocks. So, but it does look like, and it looks like maybe between about 1:00 and 3:00 in the afternoon is when the demonstrations would actually be happening. So just wanted to update y'all on that.
Sounds good. Anything else? Is that all?
That's it.
Okay. A couple, just a couple of quick updates from me. I, the Board of County Commissioners had received a, a request from a constituent regarding a meeting with each commissioner on housing. And I wanted to just touch base with the board on this and suggest that we ask our Sarah, Sarah Radus to check in with the constituent to find out a little bit more about the kind of information that she's looking for and based on that response, determine next steps. It may be that she, you know, one aspect of her email was tell me more about housing and what that looks like in Jefferson County. She is also part of Together Colorado, a group that we have worked closely with over a period of time and is very aware of our work related to the Housing Advocacy Committee and much more. So, and the constituent may not be aware of this. So if that's all right with you, just to keep things moving forward and, and Sarah being our point person, I would ask that we have Sarah Radus reach out to the constituent, who's also named Sarah, and find out a little bit more information and potentially connect her with Cat Douglas or see if there's something specific that is related to a policy decision in the board. Does that sound okay? Does that sound good? Okay. Perfect. The other, the other issue I wanted to highlight for you is we had a great Jeffco Wildfire Commission meeting. And I just wanted to bring to your attention two items. One, we've received more feedback from our commission members on the draft roadmap and have finalized those next steps and, and we'll be bringing that to the board for review and, and awareness really more so. But it focuses on four key areas. One is to really think about how we explore the wildfire commission's evolving role and continue to bolster visibility and ensure that there's, we're not duplicating efforts with other existing groups, but we're always complimenting each other's work moving forward. We do think it's important to continue the work of the wildfire commission. We also want to look at advocacy and communication strategy and kind of button that down a little bit more and focus more heavily on it in light of the other recommendations that have been achieved. And also doing that work very closely with Brian Keating, our new Wildland Fire Manager. Brian, if you're listening, I hope I got that title, the new title correct. But he's always at the table with us. And there's a major communications component in the Wildland program that we approved just recently. So again, we want to make sure that we're sinking our efforts and their efforts and, and other partners. Two other big areas include providing expanded guidance on mitigation metrics that's involving mitigation on the front, front end regarding the number of acres that are treated tied to positive outcomes from other mitigation efforts that may not always be counted like investments in educational programs and implementation of regulations that with the help of planning and zoning and building we put in place a number of years ago regarding defensible space and building codes, the wooly building codes that are coming out and more. So we're trying to get our arms around that and how we define mitigation, what that looks like and number of different, different factors involved above and beyond acres treated. And then finally, supporting the coordination of funding sustainability and capacity development. We definitely got a lift from 1A, no question, but the need is huge and will continue to be. And how do we work with other partners on supporting our wildfire risk reduction efforts moving forward regarding dedicated funding options? And of course, that ties into advocacy and communications, all those other components. So just a heads up about that. And also we found with the help of Sarah Radus and Kate will be working with you on this as well, looking at the regulate or the policy that the Board of County Commissioners, previous Board of County Commissioners approved when we updated the task force to the commission. And there's just some basic updating we need to do in that resolution to reflect where we are now. Nothing major, just, just a little tiny bit of tweaking around the edges. So I just wanted to alert you to that because that will be coming to the board as well. And then finally, Colorado Insurance Commissioner Michael Conway and I do have a, a call set for the next week or two. It's beyond our deadline for CCI, but I'm certain that they are moving forward. But as soon as I get that information, I'll share with the board. And also we can talk more about Colorado Fire Commission, other groups involved in those homeowners insurance efforts to reduce costs and make it accessible. One flag for you, Joe, and our team, when we did the tour of community table yesterday, Sandy had mentioned that she may be coming our way to talk more about funding issues. We mentioned to her briefly the NCAP process, but we didn't have an opportunity to go into greater detail. I wanted to flag this because my concern was she may be coming sooner rather than later. And we often try to avoid those supplementary budget requests. And we're right in the middle of this work now. So it might be a good idea for us to be proactive and to reach out to Sandy Martin, the Executive Director of Community Table, to just reference this brief conversation, which is part of the larger tour, and maybe provide a little bit more detail about our work around NCAP. And, you know, is there immediate need or is it something that just we could flag for her for 2026?
Commissioner Hayes probably most appropriate for Kate to.
Agreed.
So Kate, we'll take care of that. Just to be clear, our process for NCAP, you know, is in progress and the deadline is already closed. I think it was, what, two weeks ago, Kate, or somewhere close to that for applications. And so, you know, that's the type of information we could share.
That's right. I agree completely. And then that would set her up potentially for 2026 and then she can factor that. You know, for, because some of these are for 2025 that we're approving, right? Is in some of the restoration or do we already do the restoration?
Oh, we, we've already done the restoration for all but two. We're still considering two.
So all right, just FYI and let us know what, what you hear. Okay, that's it.
Okay.
Commissioner Zenzinger, thank you.
Yes, so I found my notes.
Okay, perfect.
Well, I couldn't find my notes, but I reconstructed my notes.
Excellent.
Because I couldn't find it. So I have four things, the first of which is things with mountain rail are starting to progress a little bit more quickly. And I don't know if the board has had a conversation recently about our desire about whether or not we wanted to advocate or claim the station area, the sighting for that. Things are advancing very quickly because they are funding it internally using state funds. It's not connected to any federal funding. So they're able to kind of move forward very quickly. And I think we need to engage in some conversations with probably the city of Arvada in particular of over who is interested in pursuing that? Where we might potentially put a station? I, I know that we're all very supportive and we're all, you know, have been participating in the meetings, but like no decisions have been made and nobody's like really stepping forward and saying, we want it. And so the moment is coming where I think we have to make a decision about whether or not we want to be a part of those conversations, whether we want the, the sighting for that to be in Jefferson County or whether we're comfortable saying, you take it, Arvada, and so on and so forth. So I would just like to bring that up as a conversation point. And I think we need to activate the conversations a little bit more seriously with the, the Department of CDOT and with our, our partners on that.
I have a question about that. Do you think, and I know you both have been a little bit more, you've definitely been more engaged in this than I have. But I wonder if it wouldn't be helpful, that maybe there are two tracks too, so see what you think. We've got, I get it. I'm on a roll without even knowing it. Oh my goodness. I'm wondering if maybe during our study session, just so we have a, a public, you know, presentation on this and sort of what the different parts are, what you've been learning, kind of the dates and the timelines and what that might look like and what it might involve, just sort of a basic 101 around this. And then it sounds like, I feel, I'm hearing a sense of urgency on, on this. What do you think would be most critical in terms of next steps and timing regarding those talks? And, and Joe, if you have thoughts on it.
Holly, I do think we had some initial interactions, Kate, you, I think you and Commissioner Kerr were looking at some of our properties that the county owns. And I think we provided that to Commissioner Kerr, maybe directly to someone else with CDOT. So we had some initial preliminary conversations. I'm trying to look for properties that we owned that might be suitable. I don't think we found any, Kate, that we thought were suitable based on the sizing that was necessary under the location. But my understanding was they were still looking for other parcels, other than county owned parcels through the corridor. So Commissioner Kerr, Kate, can you share?
Well.
Yeah, no, and then so that we started that effort and then we have the Moffett Tunnel discussions that are now resolved. So the alignment's more clear, but we haven't relooked since the alignment really came out.
And what, what we were doing at that time, it was mostly at the behest of Representative Taton was working with Amtrak on an Amtrak stop, which is really the, different. I mean, hopefully they'll all, they'll, you know, they'll all work together in this. And it, I mean, it would be an Amtrak stop. It will all be the same thing. But at that time, it was, that, that was pre mountain rail, the, the official mountain rail stop. So it was a little bit different. And at the time, Arvada, my impression was Arvada very much didn't want to have anything to do with it. I think mountain rail and stuff, I think that has changed. But that might, with, with the presentation you were talking about, I would, we, we get, I, I don't think we have to do like that in depth on every, every single spot or anything like that, but maybe just a, a little bit of an overview. What, what do county in Colorado and across the country, do counties get involved in, in stations like this? Or is that really a municipality thing? Or in this case, and, and we don't need to follow what other counties are doing or what happens in other states, but just to get a little bit of the, the pros and cons, you know, a little pro and cons list on.
And then tying that to the latest information that you're getting as well, just so we're all on the same page. And then together we can move forward to see what might be the next steps.
I actually think that that is too preliminary for what, where we are right now, honestly. I mean, we need to have it, but I, I think that we are coming very rapidly upon a, a decision point where they are going to ask us, do you want the station or not? And, and I don't think we're prepared to answer that yet, which is why I'm bringing it up. And I think we need to be a little bit more aggressive in interfacing with CDOT because they are moving at breakneck speed and they're not exactly involving us in what is happening. So I keep getting updates where I'm like, what? You know, where we've jumped light years ahead of where I thought we were. And we have not yet had a serious conversation with the city of Arvada about whether or not they are planning on taking the station. And if they are not interested, are we interested or vice versa? Are we interested where we could approach Arvada and say, hey, we're interested? Or are we looking to partner with them? So that's the first thing. And it's related to my second thing, which is I had a, a interesting conversation with a constituent who lives in Lyden, who had concerns around the parkway. Was wondering about the, the parkway and its development and some of their needs that they have. And brought up the possibility of this rail station. So in addition to that, we have a third component that is now sort of in the mix, which is Front Range Passenger Rail District, which the alignment would be up the US 36 corridor into Boulder and then jetting off into Longmont. And, and then the last thing is, is some of the development that is now occurring in sort of the Northwest Arvada area. So there are considerations and questions about all three, all four of these components, how they are interacting with one another. And what was asked of me and brought up during my conversation with this gentleman from Lyden, which is when is the last time that we have done a corridor study with the new knowledge of all of these different components? You know, I know that we've done them in the past and that there has been one and that there is currently one. But these are kind of newer elements that we need to consider that probably have not been wrapped into this corridor planning. We've gotten a lot of requests around affordable housing and housing considerations with, with regard to the development. But all of these things are impacting just the, the overall picture for transportation and, and how it would potentially relate to one another. So if, if the parkway doesn't move forward, what are the considerations for what's happening on Highway 93 or Highway 72 with regard to development? With the potential of a rail station coming in, depending on where it's cited, that's going to have a pretty big impact on our local roadways and people trying to get there and its impact to the neighborhood. Will this have any influence over what is happening with the Front Range Rail? I, I don't know. But the mountain rail one, I think we need to advance that conversation quicker rather than sooner. Sooner rather than later, I should say. And then secondly, I, I didn't know how to respond necessarily around this request for a Northwest Arvada sort of county corridor study with our, our, our other partners, you know, with Golden, with Arvada. And, and its impact on if we cited a future rail station with the knowledge that the Front Range Passenger Rail is probably coming through along that corridor with our questions outstanding with regarding the, the parkway. And, and I think a lot of that is really coming to a head right now. So I would like to ask the board if we could direct staff to kind of look into it, start moving in a, in a direction to figure out the answer.
Is the August 12th work session, is that the date, Mary Kay, August 12?
August 12th, yes.
Is that soon enough?
Well, a couple of thoughts, just a couple of reactions, because it is a lot to unpack and I feel the sense of urgency for sure. First of all, to the first question, yes, I would support the board providing direction to staff to work with Commissioner Zenzinger on unpack, unpacking four or five different issues that have just come up. I also think it'd be great if you'd be willing to take the lead to identify what for the study session is important in that public briefing session versus what work might need to happen behind the scenes. I would always, as always, just hope that we're thinking too about staff capacity and bandwidth for this issue. And I do think it would be helpful. I think there's a way to kind of thread together Commissioner Kerr's comments and your comments, but perhaps with an even more specific focus on that station, right? And look at pros and cons, potential costs and more. And are there legal issues as well that are, are part of this? Your point also about the corridor study. So that, that's what I would recommend. Maybe perhaps working further with Joe to identify those key components for a study session that are necessary. And then what are other components that need to happen either before that or now?
Yeah.
And if that, let me just ask Commissioner Kerr, is there anything you'd add or switch? Okay, so, okay.
And kind of in the hierarchy of importance, I would say that the mountain rail conversation is probably the most urgent in the moment because so much is happening and I think we are unaware of, of what is happening. So I'd like to initiate a conversation around that very specifically. And then just to kind of add to it, we also have our, our airport, you know, is also in this area. And so I, I think these are all important transportation. I don't know what. That are all having an impact. And, and I would like to start to, yeah, start to figure out, you know, how, what's our plan? How, how are we thinking about these things and in, in the future? But just kind of like in the, a little bit of a hierarchy.
Commissioner Zenzinger, when you and I meet on Monday of next week, we can sort through this.
That'd be great.
Kate, if your calendar allows, you should.
And Andy has a quick comment.
Just one, one little tiny thing also is the whole quantum.
Well, that, that's absolutely what, yeah, what's driving it. I mean, there's a housing component to that, there's a workforce component to that. We've been talking a lot about affordable housing and making sure that, you know, people who work there can afford to live there. But this also has a transportation component that's related to it, so.
And I had asked if we could just reroute the, the trains to stop at the airport and I was told no.
No. Good try though. Yeah. Three other things, or two other things. We recently, as a board, put together those letters I mentioned about this morning around FEMA and some of the changes that Congress is contemplating that have now passed in the budget proposal, as well as we wrote a letter on mental health and the impacts of potential Medicaid changes. And I, I would kind of like to know if it's possible, if we could post those to, to our page where we've been tracking this kind of stuff. Obviously they didn't listen, but I would like to make them public, those two letters, because they're not resolutions and they're not, you know.
Yeah.
And so they're, they're, they're a little less formal, but I still feel as if they were important actions that we took prior to that vote. And I wanted to make sure that the public knew that we were advocating on their behalf. And then my next question is, if we could get maybe the executive order task force or, or maybe not, what are our next steps now that all of our appeals over, you know, around public lands, around public Medicaid, around SNAP, around Human Services, around mental health and around FEMA were not listened to? What, what are our kind of next steps is what I would like to ask. And, and just start thinking about, do we need to have a, a next steps conversation?
Couple of thoughts on that one too. I actually think we're going to have a very robust study session coming up in August. Because it would be helpful and, and also Congresswoman Pedersen's office has reached out to us on this issue. And they are working on compiling information around various impacts tied to SNAP, tied to Medicaid and more. But I think what we will need to do is help our community better understand not only the impacts based on the latest version of the law. We had an earlier version. I don't know if it's changed much, Cassie, regarding the numbers that we quoted this morning during commission reports, for example, about the number of people impacted by SNAP. But I do think it's important for us to have, to be able to tell that story to the community. One, here's the impact that we're looking at. And two, here's how we're responding to it. And three, here's how we're collaborating with our partners across Jefferson County, whether it's nonprofits, the faith-based community businesses and more, to help minimize that impact. One of the things that came up during our tour with Community Table yesterday was looking at leveraging the Food Task Force Group to address this issue, just as we did during COVID. So we're addressing it in real time. We have people working on this together with Human Services, county team members and others. That group is still up and running and viable. But I do think that's a really good point, Commissioner Zenzinger. So perhaps what we might be able to do is think about designing a, a component of our study session that circles back on some of these key pieces. And there's some advanced work that could be done for that study session in these key areas. You know, right now FEMA is still a moving, you know, we've heard from Nate already that there was a meeting coming up. He was going to circle back to us with more detailed information as he gets it. So I think that when Nate has that information, he will share it with us and we can, we can have additional information.
Commissioner, even more specifically, Nate will be here on July 22nd to update the board on FEMA. He has a meeting scheduled for tomorrow that he will be in attendance at. And then July 22nd is our next opportunity to talk with the board.
So we can check that one. We'll continue to have a conversation, but we know that that one's coming. Thanks, Joe. And the other piece is it might be helpful to have a briefing from Mary Burke and Human Services to take a look at SNAP and Medicaid specifically. And one, to hear more about what are the impacts that they're seeing? Because I think the other question we're going to get from our community, we have already, is we know the state can't backfill, right? So what does that mean for the county in terms of how we think about this? What, if anything, can we do and then how do we strategize moving forward?
Yes. So related to that, I, I did want to point out, Mary Burke sent a memo with regarding the SNAP payment error rates. This is a fact sheet that was put together by the. This is a fact sheet that was put together by the Human Services Directors Association just to try and clarify some of the myths and facts around that, which I think is helpful, which prompted me to think we might need to be doing more of those, those types of clarifying fact sheets, which we would then be able to put on our website in order to be able to help with that education piece for the general public. But I would agree, I think it would be helpful also to note that it is very new. And so we probably don't really have a full handle on things yet. So it'll be ever evolving. And many of these things are not slated to go into effect until 2026. So I do know that there'll be at the minimum of a year delay between, you know, when full implementation will occur, which is just long enough for people to kind of like forget, you know, to kind of drop it and not realize that things are going to change, you know, and change pretty dramatically. So I wanted to bring that one up as well as, oh, I just lost the.
Oh, mentioned something, I'm sorry. Hold on, I'm sorry, hold on to that thought, yes, sorry. Because what I wanted to add to that is that this gives us the opportunity to do that strategizing and planning. So when they do go into effect, we have uncovered every single rock to help those vulnerable community members, right? Through these different collaborators and partners that we currently work with. And then Cassie, I'm also thinking that as part of the study session, perhaps we could look at just an update from you on the webpage for the federal piece to help. I agree with you. I actually wish, Cassie, don't leave the room when I say this. I actually wish that we had fact sheets, just simple updated one-pagers on what the county is doing on housing, on what we're doing on transportation. And we used to have that online, I forget what we called it, but the tracker that we use. And it's a big job, so I recognize that, too. And you're really great about giving us talking points, which helps us in real time. But I think actually if there's a website continuing to build upon the current website and using that as a way to direct people and maybe a dashboard or something that really says visually, here's the impact, here's how many people are, and here's what we're doing about it. Maybe there's links to more in-depth info. But perhaps there's also a communications component related to the update in this study session. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure to get that.
So, related to that would be, since the majority of the changes are not happening immediately, the governor and the state legislature might not call a special session as they were originally thinking that they might need to do in order to potentially address the impacts of the Medicaid changes in particular, because that has such an outsized impact on the state budget and counties relatedly. So people at the legislature and the governor's office have started saying, oh, we don't need a special session now because we believe that the major changes won't happen until later. However, I would like to push back on that just ever so slightly. And I would like to bring up that right now, I think there are some potential prohibitions, lack of clarity in statute with regard to how counties could potentially backfill for these federal programs. Because we've never had the authority to do that, because it's never been up to us to do it. We've never had to tap the general fund in order to pay for a federal program. And so because we haven't done it, it means that we don't explicitly, I believe, have authority to be able to exercise our budgetary discretion in order to address some of these changes that are coming down. If that is the case, I think we do need to appeal to our legislators and to the governor and to the HICPuff to see if we need to advance legislation sooner rather than later again. Because just because these changes won't go into effect, we need to be prepared statutorily to be able to respond.
That's on the agenda for tomorrow's legislation discussion.
Right. Which is what I was going to ask, number one, because I do think that we need to pitch this to CCI. I do think that counties need to come together as a unified voice. And what I'm hearing, I had a conversation with Commissioner Pogue from Summit County about concerns around housing, for example, and some of the impacts that are going to spill over into the housing arena because of this. Because we have used Medicaid funding in certain situations to be able to help with that. And I think we need to be at the table with that and I think we need to be driving the conversation potentially to CCI and to our other county partners to bring this up with the state, just to make them aware and hopefully get a legislative fix going so that we can protect ourselves and so that we can have the ability to react and adjust to the changes that we know are coming. That's one thing. And then, secondly, it was also mentioned in a CCAT conversation that we had that we might start thinking about newer legislation that has passed, that has potentially not gone into effect yet, that has financial implications to counties, you know, those unfunded mandates, that we might be able to highlight and promote to the governor and to the legislature as ways that they can help relieve the pressure that we are not feeling. We can't do anything about backfilling Medicaid, but could you perhaps put the brakes on or extend the timeline? Or just like repeal certain things that we know are coming down the pipe that have not gone into effect yet?
Yeah.
There were a couple of examples that were brought up around Human Services. I do believe that there were one or two examples, and Andy, you might remember better than I did, around transportation. So I would, I would like to, I think that's a great idea. And I definitely think that we should participate in that and that we should be making a plea to the state. If we're going to incur new expenses, if we're going to be now having to cover more staffing and on one hand, then are there ways that we could relieve it on the other? And so if staff has ideas, if departments have ideas about things that might not have gone into effect yet, or maybe they have, but they'd be willing to pause for a little while so that we can have a conversation at the legislature about maybe next steps, you know, repealing those programs or extending them, their implementation a little bit. And I think we need to be proactive in those conversations rather than reactive. So those would be the two things that I would bring up for our conversation tomorrow or to, you know, kind of get out to our organization about, because I don't want to be caught behind the ball on this.
Yeah, one other, one other piece I will add to that, too. The Colorado County's Inc. Board talked about this during the summer conference. And there was a letter that we were asked to sign on to that focused on a couple of counties who, and it was beyond what we felt comfortable supporting. But what we had talked about was this very notion of moving forward and pushing with the governor's office a potential pause and that we also thought that was an area where we could see bipartisan support to allow for the very things that you spelled out so well. So the CCI board with Kelly Flonakin as executive director is looking at this component as well as part of a larger organization. And I wouldn't be surprised, we have a board meeting coming up that we had to reschedule. Hopefully, we'll still have it in August prior to the district meetings, which overlap now with the CCAT meeting on Friday.
Yeah.
But one in August, but one of the, CCI, yeah, right, we did. Anyway, there's a little bit of an overlap there. And so I can also double-check with Kelly to see if this issue will be brought up at those Front Range meetings. We had talked about bringing it up and then kind of fleshing it out from there. So just know there's also that strategy happening at the CCI level, but I don't think there's enough we could do to hit it from all pieces. But just so we're all over on that, too.
And I would be very interested, Kim, in particular, your expertise with this, you know, with regard to our legal ability, you know, to react to these new changes. And it's not necessarily that we can't, it's just that it's never, it's not explicitly mentioned. So, you know, if it doesn't exist in our laws, it's hard to know whether or not we are permitted to or not. And so.
There are a number of statutes that are involved.
Okay, great. And then.
Commissioner Zenzinger, I'd also like to interject. I think as we go through these conversations, we've really got to be more strategic. I think what we have received, I mean, we've received notice of numerous changes as a result of the new federal administration and changes that are being made of the federal department models. And there is no way that Jefferson County has the financial wherewithal to backfill all of these potential impacts. And so as we, you know, are peppered with so many different changes, somehow we've got to approach it in a way that's more strategic and not just, hey, we have a catcher's net, anything that's thrown at us, we're going to backfill. And so I just want to voice that concern.
I agree, and I think that's the real strength also of what you have been raising in this, in this update. Because I think that is exactly an effective use of our work-study sessions. That's where I think we can really dig into these issues, be far more strategic as opposed to issues that we can tackle either during briefings or more importantly, on Wednesdays. So if, I mean, these are critical, big issues coming our way and having the staff come to the board perhaps with some initial thinking that we can dig in, give some reactions to, and really work on together, I think would be powerful. And the sooner we, everything feels urgent right now. And you're right, Joe, we don't want to be there with the catcher's mitts. So I totally support a more strategic approach as we move forward and being more effective in using those work-study sessions to get it done. That's what they're for.
And part of the reason why I'm bringing this up is because we're in the midst of our budget season, right? We're right now contemplating next year's budget. And all of these things are going to have an outsized impact this year with how we plan to react or not. And so I would like to get a handle on that and kind of figure out what are the things in our authority that are worth paying attention to? What are the things that we just have no control over and that we should shed from our thinking? And how many of these things are in alignment with our current budget decisions? You know, with regard to the 1A funds, with regard to restoration of our mill levies, you know, to Human Services, for example, and so on and so forth. So that's exactly why I was bringing it up. I have one more and then I'm done.
No, that's good. I'm going to make myself a million. So. In the exact session, at the beginning of that work session, if that's what we're going to be doing, to get you some advice on kind of some of the parameters before we start having conversations about direction.
Of course, yeah, absolutely. That'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then the last thing, I just wanted to give you an update on a conversation, a series of conversations that I've been having with Commissioner Marlin around our early childhood councils and our LCOs. They're, you know, we're still kind of in the early stages of the universal preschool and the local coordinating organizations and the Department of Early Childhood and the reimagining of early childhood services in Colorado. And we've now gone through two rounds of bidding for the LCOs and we just completed the second one. But there are a lot of moving parts right now with, in particular, the Early Childhood Council Triad, which was interested in bidding for that LCO and then they ended up not. And everything is pretty much staying the same. But just wanted to give you all a little bit of a heads up that there is and has been some movement in these areas and have been engaging in a conversation with our county partners that are a part of our LCO and interested in continuing those conversations. And I will update you if it looks like there is anything that is pressing that is going to be coming before the board soon, so.
Keep reading. So just going back to, I'm sorry, one other really quick thing, going back to the budget that you were talking, we, I think our biggest challenge in light of the federal and state cuts are the competing demands we're facing. And Commissioner Zenzinger, I think articulated that so well in her comments, that it also makes me wonder if the board should come up, perhaps with Cassie and Joe's help, possibly Kim's, with just a statement around as we get requests from constituents about really wonderful ideas like pollinator gardens or, you know, looking at festivals and more. Would we love to do those? Absolutely. Do we have enough money, 1A money, to even fund the things that we would, that we need to fund that voters have approved? No, regarding the requests that we're getting from different departments. We got a sneak peek of that just recently. So I just, I also think there's something in here about just the board thinking together about how we respond to requests like those that come in that truly are wonderful, creative, thoughtful ideas. But I don't know that our community fully understands, and understandably so, the stretch that we're facing right now. You know, whether it's the gutting of SNAP and other things and what that means in terms of what we can backfill or can't backfill. And Kim's going to help us with the legal piece around that. But I also think maybe that's part, and what can I, Cassie, of the communications piece that we think about, too. Because we continue to get those and it just shows a huge disconnect between where we are as a county versus what our community may be thinking. Hey, that's great, those 1A funds came in. We know they can only be spent for certain things, but it doesn't mean that there's a lot of extra money anywhere else. It's, so I think some, maybe some piece around that related to. Maybe that's part of our August conversation. I don't think we need to deal with it right this instant, but I just want to put that on if the board is comfortable to just being, I think we're going to have to be really disciplined and strategic as we do this work.
I absolutely agree. And I think also the public is looking to us for guidance and for clarity and they want to know, what are we doing?
And sense-making.
Yes, and so I think, I think it would be very appropriate for us to have a statement of that nature to say, we're on it. We don't know all the answers yet, but we are focused. We are having the conversations. These are the things that we are concerned with, that we are looking into at the moment, which makes it difficult to contemplate and entertain other things at the moment. You know, is that we are, we're trying to figure it out, but we're on it.
We're prioritizing, right, these important competing demands.
Those are my things.
My page is now full.
Yes.
Means that we have no more staff to pass.
No, I'm sorry to, that's why I was looking for my notes, is I knew I had all of this written down and I even had little talking points for all of them. So it kind of came out as more of a download. But it's just some of the things that I, that have come to me in conversations that I've had over the past couple of weeks that I felt was important to raise with the board so that we can start to integrate it into our planning, so.
Thank you. Great, great points. All right, County Manager Joe Kirby.
Commissioner, I have nothing for the show. Go to my office and we'll talk.
Sorry, we're going to be taking a three-hour break and then we'll be back. And we may take a quick lunch break, too. It's a little bit on the earlier side, but I think we might want to do that if food is ready and I don't know. So next, we will go to our county attorney for any updates. And if there are no updates, we'll move into a motion for our executive session.
Just a reminder to the board, next Monday, Tuesday, I will be out and Carrie Markle will be acting county attorney. So I just wanted, it will be on my out of office so that in case anyone tries to reach me. And then that's all I had, other than a motion to go into executive session for purposes of discussing. of discussing the sheriff's litigation update under, for legal advice, under CRS 2464024B, as well as the Lutheran Legacy Campus URA for legal advice under the same citation and advice to negotiators under CRS 2464024E.
I moved that we go into executive session for the reasons outlined by the county attorney.
Is there a second? Second, anyone opposed? We will move into exec session in a couple of minutes. Actually, why don't we take a 10-minute break? We can grab lunch, bring it back.